We now call the Tuesday, October tenth work session to order. Please rise with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have the reading of the mission statement.
Richmond Community Schools guides students on pathways of learning to a future of limitless possibilities.
All right, thank you. And the vision statement?
Richmond Community Schools, a collaborative community nurturing mind, body, and spirit to prepare students for lives of choice, purpose, and service.
Thank you both. All right, so the first thing we're going to be discussing is our work session topic, McBride Stadium.
President Stoles, trustees, yet again, we sincerely appreciate you all taking time out to attend the work session, engage in further dialogue and communication surrounding, sitting around the real estate opportunity of McBride Stadium. Last week, Mrs. Scow, I'm sorry, during our last scheduled board meeting, Mrs. Scow had presented to our public and to you all as a board the opportunity there at McBride. We have the presentation at the record, if necessary, that we need to revisit the slides. But overall, wanted to have an opportunity to extend the conversation as well as open the conversation up for public commentary.
So as far as questions, concerns, thoughts?
Talked to, I talked to several members of REA even last week. They were still there after the meeting, and they were all in favor of it. It was like a no brainer. Anytime you're gonna get that kind of land and facility for that little of a price, it's, they were all in favor of it. And I concur their statements. I mean, obviously, I think it's gonna be part of a big master plan to really rejuvenate that area. That's what I would like to see. But I'm more than just, I really think it's a great opportunity. And it's sad to see where it was ten, fifteen years ago and see where it is now. I think this needs some TLC, and I think, I think we can give it to it.
I'm going to present something from one of our community members who very interestingly uses the facility, but is not RCS. It was, I was contacted by staff at Seton Catholic, and they have their concerns in regards to the usage of it. And I'm going to, and I told them I would be negligent at them as taxpayers, you know, taxpaying citizens of the community, not to bring some of the points about. And one of them, concern is being able to play home games and practice at McBride Stadium this year and in the future. With the state of the baseball facility in the region, there are no legitimate options for them. Let me see, one of the other important to have consistent practice times for them. We want, they would want to be sure they have a concern about the rental fees that have been paid in the past, and whether they remain the same or be similar. I will forward these in its entirety to the board and to the administration for those. But I know that we're not making a decision tonight, if I understand. And so therefore, I'll give, I'll forward this to you just so we can answer their questions. Because regardless of the fact that they are a private entity, you know, their families and, and the people who, who attend Seton Catholic are still Richmond citizens and taxpayers. So I want to do my diligence as a board member, ask the question so they can have their answers.
Interesting enough with regards to the work session as we have in the past, I'm curious to know if the board would like to extend that conversation. I'd love for Mrs. Scow to interject because I know that if, if, if there's cuff level to that, or...
No, yes.
I was planning on asking if you could speak to either of those.
So, so one thing about the...
Miss Scow, I beg your pardon. I know that you have a presentation to do. If, if, or, or whatever we were going to do, this came, this came within the last twenty-four hours, okay? I would not expect any answers from you necessarily right now because we're discussing these things. But out of fairness to you and everyone, again, if you're not ready, I'm willing to forward all this information to everyone to get, to give you time to prepare the answers.
What I'll say on this particular question, this was a part of the conversation very early on as we were talking with the city of Richmond about just the options. And what we have, have discussed was that anybody currently using the facility, we didn't foresee changes per se in, in the availability of being able to use it. Some changes in priority levels might be different just because of ownership. But in reality, it's not much different than, because during, during season, RCS has had priority for a long time, and then Seton has had second priority. What I, what we've talked about is we didn't foresee any changes. People wanted to use it. As long as we can work it all out, it's fine. As far as usage fees, I can't speak to what was because I only know bits and pieces. I know what we were charged. I know what the operating plan at one time looked like. I can't say it's the same. I can't say it's less. I can't say it's more. Because that would just be our determination. What I would foresee with this facility is we set up an actual cost for usage of the fields. And depending on which type of field it is, what I will say is I have already had multiple requests to rent some of the other fields for practices during different seasons. And so that's something that is definitely part of our next steps if we decide to do this. It's something that you as a board will have to determine and approve is any fees because you approve all usage fees throughout the district for anything you do. That's something that we would need to tackle very early on after closing happens because we have been asked to start scheduling for next year. So yes, I have thought about it. Yes, we have talked about it. And our thought was that we could honor whatever we could in, in the current people that have used it. What I will say is that based on preliminary information from the city of Richmond, no one currently has a contract per se. I do not know if that is, we're still waiting on kind of the final information from them. So that could be very wrong. But that is so that we can work through that if that's ours. So it being fall, that's not abnormal either. A lot of that is done in the winter. But yeah, so our plan wasn't really to make major changes when it came to the availability of the facility. In fact, we want to grow it a little bit as we look ahead.
Well, I certainly understand and I'll relay it back to them. You know, that the discussion for their concern be something upcoming in the future publicly if in fact, you know, it does, you know, the purchase does, does go through. But, you know, I just wanted to bring it out there. And again, I'm sorry to catch you off guard with it. That's why I wasn't expecting an answer right now. But just to let you know what those were concerns.
It's something that I expected to be questioned because it's a question I would have if I was on the flip side. It's something that would be important to us if we were talking about a different direction that because it, it does matter, and it's something that we rely on as a facility.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
I would follow up. I know in the past, the board's kind of been split on facilities and community usage. And do we open our doors? Do we close our doors? At some point, I think the board probably needs to take, make it clear what we want, you know, moving forward because I think it's, it's still nebulous. I think there's some administrators that think Richmond for, you know, McTirrenan, Richmond students only. Some people think, let's open it up. So, so I think at some point, the board probably needs to have that bigger discussion. But personally, after one, think, I mean, Seton should be accommodated totally. I think they're part of the community. I think McBride is a community asset. And so I would encourage us to, to go that route personally. And, but I think to help the administration have a clear path, at some point, we need to have a further discussion of, of kind of, because I know it's just been split. Some people think the doors should be closed, and some people think they should be open. And we've been like that since I've been on the board. And so I think that makes it difficult for administrators to then know what the board truly is looking for. So I'd like us to kind of clarify that a bit.
So why don't I talk about that right now, just so we see what the current board is thinking in regards to that?
Can I make one comment before you have this conversation? So what I will say is what I remember of that issue is participation in Richmond programming. Facility use at the present has a form that anybody can put in and request to use. And we have school-related activity. We have a chart of fees based on if you are school-related, if you are a community partner, if you are not for profit, if you are for profit, if you are an unrelated entity. So right now, our doors are technically open for facility rental. But the programming piece would be different. And that, I think, is part of the conversation that has been in the past, exactly what Mr. Weber said. So I just wanted to clarify that.
My thoughts are the fact that, you know, in two years, you know, when you drive, when you drive down that, you know, Northwest Thirteenth Street corridor, it's not gonna look like it looks like on October tenth, twenty twenty-three. You know, with the renovation of the stadium, should we purchase it? The renovation of the stadium, the fields and everything else, some of the things that are anticipated to be done with those area. And even though with the purchase, it would be an RCS property, an RCS facility, it's still going to be one of those gems that has been, so to speak, forsaken for a while. When I say forsaken, pushed to the back of the forefront of the community when it comes to thinking. You know, when you consider the rich history of that stadium in itself, and not just baseball, but other venues that had been held in that facility in the fifties and the sixties and even in the seventies. You know, that could be a huge community boom in so many things. So I, it's just my opinion, you know, with the purchase, that it becomes, you know, something that we can still share with the community.
I'll turn, and I agree. I mean, I feel like, and that's what I heard you say, Seton would still be able to continue to use it, and other community members, I mean, can request. And it's gonna be hopefully a lot better condition. I think they'll really appreciate probably the newer updates that RCS will do, so.
Well, I anticipate seeing things done with softball fields and practice fields to where it will be a true practice baseball field to where having the two fields there, I mean, won't be available. I'm not even sure if Seton offers softball. Yeah, maybe give them the opportunity to expand their offerings if, if the facilities are available, so. I, I just think by being able to put multiple fields together and, you know, opportunities are limitless right now on that, on that property. And we could really make a gem out of it or revive the gem.
Yeah. Just to piggyback on what a member of Seton had referenced, I think that the opportunity to, as we renovate, if, if we are to, to assume the property, bringing back a community's home base, if you will be. They're on that northwest side, as the McBride said, and it's sort of Star Elementary School serves as that community's home base. Fairview Elementary is that community's home base, on and on and on. And I think just the idea, as was mentioned, that, that not only for that northwest side, but also just for the entire community would be fantastic.
Kim, what were you gonna say?
No, I was just gonna say, I had talked to one of the coaches for girls' travel softball, one of the teams. They're actually based out of Winchester because there's no place here. So he was very excited. He just, you know, they, all they do is travel to tournaments around. And he even mentioned, you know, opening it up is, if you think about everyone from Dayton, almost halfway to Indy, all of those sort of travel teams that a lot of kids are from Richmond, that they go elsewhere to play. Even if the team might not be based here, you know, certain teams might want to have post their own tournament at McBride, which then creates a lot of revenue, which then I think interns helps with, you know, Seton and sort of those local things that we want to support. Keep fees low on certain things if we're, you know, kind of trying to look at that budget and how we plan those things out, so. But he was overly excited at the actual potential of, you know, not driving to Winchester. And I think that season is, you know, since softball's in spring still, I believe, you know, summer through fall. So, you know, there's not necessarily a lot going on, depending on the sport, but so.
I remember that I lost it. Karen, is the field east of the creek in such condition to be used for even practices?
The plan would be that we make it. Currently, it needs some work. We could not practice there this year without, some work was done in order to do that. And I know Seton practiced there sometimes too. But we would need to do a little bit of upkeep right now. That side of the creek needs some love at the present, so.
So there's potential to increase?
There is absolutely potential.
Why do you ask, Ron? Ron, why do you ask?
Well, the point being, there's a potential to increase the capacity from, based on improving the condition to make it playable. I mean, I know this is kind of like a broken record, but three years ago, four years ago, before Dr. Wright got here, we were in conversations that we can't get home and home contracts with baseball in the North Central Conference because the schools don't want to come here. That, that's, that's a dagger in your heart if you've been here as long as I have. I probably spent more hours in that field than probably most anybody in here.
I mean, when you consider, it's too bad it got to that. When you consider, when it comes to high school baseball, and even when there was the American Legion baseball leagues during the summer and everything else, this was the place to come to, you know, regional semi-states, championship games that were held, held there. Everybody, everybody talked about how magnificent McBride Stadium was in coming when it was, you know, municipal stadium, you know, before it was renamed. And I just look forward to it getting back to being that drawing point where people say, we're going to Richmond. We're playing at McBride. You know, that's, you know, that will be our new Tirnen Center.
For those of us from Richmond, it has a special place. I hear you.
Well, my, my grandfather, my mother's, my mother's father, I, I forgot. And I never met him because he had passed away before I was born, but had been in a wrestling tournament. And there were, they used to have semi-pro wrestling tournaments there. And he, he was on a venue. He had wrestled at McBride. And I remember my mom and my grandmother talking about that. So, you know, it, the history there just is incredible.
So not to move off reminiscing, but what, what's the, and I know we're not getting to the, there's a field next to the pickleball courts. The city, is that a softball field?
It is.
Is that usable right now by the city?
It's used for the corporation, the, the evening tournaments.
And they'll maintain, they'll maintain or something like that.
And there's four fields on the property that we are entertaining and purchasing.
Yes, yes. And, and part of the, the purchase is that the city would like to retain usage of one of those fields, whichever is that we keep as a softball field for those corporation on league nights. They want to keep that going, and that would be something that they have actually asked to work with us on, which we completely agree. It's very positive for our community, so.
My only other question, and I don't want Karen to go through her presentation again. I know she presented all the plans. I have, I think the properties, I think we need to go, I think we should approve it tonight, actually, but I think we need to move forward ASAP. I'm very concerned about the plans and the long-term plan. I don't really, and I know we've had some discussions about a, a board or a superintendent working group possibly to have some input on that. Because I think what I've seen now is, is, is not what I need to see. And so I think, I think about, you know, what we did at Tirnen with the sound system, the bleachers, the lighting, the floor, and how the board had a ton of input in all those things. Because that is, as you mentioned, a, it's more than the school. I mean, that's something that I just don't want to, you know, Karen to go off and do. I mean, I think McBride needs to be done with a lot of board input. I know that people don't like to hear that administration. But I'm concerned that it's done to the level that we need it to. Not that it couldn't be, but I just, I think when we, we tend to just go off in silos, we, we kind of get ourselves in trouble. So I'd like to see a lot of more planning, a lot more input. If that board committee works or whatever, I think that's a good way to go. And kind of, kind of take that McBride model where let's take, let's have an overall plan. This is what everyone's to look at. I mean, we fought over taking those bleachers off. I mean, that was a big cost savings, and it was a hard decision. But I think the board owned all that, and I think the result pretty much speaks for itself. So that's the kind of model I'd like to, I'd like to see with McBride. A lot more board input and a very good plan about, you know, what this will look like with athletics, with community operations and that sort of thing, so.
And Mr. Weber is absolutely, I think that, which you referenced, if we are to acquire, and our administration team may, may even welcome such a motion this evening to, to proceed with such, such agreement regarding a, a purchase agreement of what could be found and what's been found in the past with his working groups. A lot of those things will be fleshed out and, and at the participation by those, or the board trustees who prefer to be a part of along with community members, you know, to accomplish that.
How do we foresee that looking? You know, you mentioned a committee or working group. I think working group would be an option, but yeah.
I mean, I have some ideas, and I don't know. I mean, people can bat them around like they want. But there's kind of a twofold process to this that we need to focus on. One is there's substantial work that just has to be done, whether it's pretty or not. And it's not pretty. It's just work that needs to be done on field maintenance. It's on some things that aren't about looks and appearances. They're just about making sure that things are cleaned up, put back together, and in good order so that we can open the season next year better than we, we found it coming in. So there, that is a much more simplistic piece to the pie. Those things have to be done in order, I mean, there's just requirements that have to be met. So that, that part isn't about the looks necessarily so much. My thought on a working group is that there are some things that can be done with this that isn't just about picking paint colors or picking appearances. Some things are about revenue generation and comfort levels. Some of it is about donor seeking. Some of it is about capital campaigns if we decide to go that route. And some of it is, is, in my opinion, a little bigger than just the sport even. So I, I actually have already provided Dr. Wright with a map to what I think would be a helpful solution to meeting that need, but also providing us with some substantial resources in the fact of people that know the business or have a vested interest, both from the youth side to people in the community that have put a lot of time and energy into that facility and love that they care about what we do with it, that they provide us with some, some information in how to best maintain. It could also substantially assist us in the maintenance department in, you know, the best practices and things like that that we do really well with our fields now that we maintain, but it also would just give us another level. But so my, my thought is that a working group, because I'm going to be, you guys all know I'm brutally honest, we cannot spend three years on a floor again. It's too hard, and so, and it's too time consuming.
I don't think we're looking for that, Karen. I think we're looking for long-term. I mean, this is a long-term project.
I understand that.
I don't care what the color is, what I care is where softball is, what, what saw, what tennis courts, where they, I mean, I want the plan, and we've seen nothing.
Well, you shouldn't be seeing anything because it's not our property yet. And we can't have too big of a conversation until we are willing to say we want to own it. We have to be careful and gentle about this because I am working on options for you. What I need to know is are we serious about actually doing this? Because there's no point in talking about options if we're not going to own it. And that's something that getting the cart too far before the horse wastes a lot of time and a lot of money because those plans have to be generated by architects or by individuals that map those so that you can see them. I one hundred percent agree with you. You want a long-term plan. I want a long-term plan. That is absolutely everything that I want to do, but I also want to do it the right way. And I know that the first step of that is deciding if we even want this property. And so that's the part that, to me, we have to focus on the pieces in line and in chronological steps so that we can do it most effectively and in the most expedited process possible when we get there.
Okay, so Mrs. Stoles, I thought that was a bit, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
What I'm curious to know, and Attorney Cross, I believe you may be able to clarify because I, I did hear, and I'm not trying to, not trying to take advantage of the, the statement that was made. But to Mrs. Scow's reference, if the board had an appetite this evening to grant unto we as administration, as well as our corporation, to continue in the, in the fashion of acquiring, could, could they, I guess, let me get to, could our board this evening, because it was mentioned, could they arrive at a vote to allow us to, or?
Ron, could we take a vote tonight?
There we go. There we go.
What, you can vote. I mean, you can, what are you gonna vote on?
And that's, that's, that's what I'm getting at, because I know that the, if, if, with regard to a purchase agreement, could they take a vote that if a purchase agreement were to be satisfactory or if we were to receive a purchase agreement and it was satisfactory, we could continue to move in that?
Well, I mean, that would be the next step, and that's, I've got the second or third iteration of it right here.
Yes, sir.
And I'm still waiting for comments.
Yes, sir.
My hope was that we could have it nearly final by the eighteenth meeting, but I, right now, the ball's not in our court. As recently as, what, two this afternoon when I sent you the, mine was red, I think theirs is blue. But between your printers, you know, we've got quite a bit of color here. But eventually, we're narrowing the issues, and, and I think, I'm not aware of anything that I see as a quote deal killer. I mean, I think we know enough about the property. I don't think there's a lot of environmental scares there. I think mechanically, Karen's been looking at it for three or four years. Seriously, the last eight, six, seven, eight months. So I think, you know, we pretty well know what, what it is and what it isn't.
And Mrs. Scow, is there anything from administrative standpoint, again, within our lean that we would need from the board this evening prior to, if, again, it all comes to fruition on the eighteenth, is there anything that we would need for our board to arrive at a vote or an understanding, or?
I think that's just up to them. I'm working on plans, but I feel to a degree that if we overplan right now and something falls through, I have seen that happen before. I mean, we had another facility where, you know, closing fell through the day before. And I just want to make sure that we aren't overcommitting resources to that if, if that should happen. So I, I guess that would be a question that I have for the board. What else do you need in order to make that decision? Is there anything else? Are we comfortable with the information? What I will say is that I'm working on things, but we can't necessarily talk about them until we own it because it's moot point. The other part is just knowing that there, the work that has to be done is routine work that we would do. Like if it was our facility, we would need to do it anyway. And so the parts that we talk about first year aren't flashy. They're just making sure that we get, get things back up to speed where we would consider them to be, to be in the condition that we would want them to be. So I think from the board perspective, just, you know, I guess it would be up to them if there was anything else that you guys need. I need to know that. If there are things that, the one thing that, you know, if we get to where the agreement is tied... if we get to where the agreement is tight on time and we get to the eighteenth, are there things that you need to know about it? We've pretty much given you the the nuts and bolts of things, but is there anything else that you have questions on? We talked about the usage that we had discussed in the conversations, just to make sure that both sides were comfortable with that and understood kind of where we were going to go or what we were thinking from both sides. I I guess that's my question and kind of for the board. Is there anything you're missing from me? Because I might be able to speak to it, it just may not be something presentation worthy or something like that.
I think that to.
I mean, I, we've, the things we've asked for, we're not going to have in a week. And I think you think that, and so I guess I would say I'm more than happy to go ahead to acquire the land, make the the deal that Ron and you have worked on. However, before significant investment is made beyond what's been agreed upon in the purchase order or that the buyer's order, I would like a lot of board input.
Thank you for saying that, John, because I remember your your statement prior to that. You announced that you were in favor of moving, but then you had some other comments to make after that, I was a little unsure. But I'm glad, you know, that you just clarified, because I've never asked you directly, are you in favor of the purchase and then and then, you know, letting the pieces fall in place with planning, you know, the architectural designs and the fields and everything else? That's where I am right now.
And I'd like to see the plans, not just for McBride, but the overall athletic plans for how this may affect other pieces of property that we own.
That's actually, I'm I'm actually working on all of that.
And I think that's what I most heard as well from Mr. Weber. And that's what I also want to assure is that once this comes to fruition, again, I'm optimistic in speaking to fruition, but once it comes to fruition through the working group, that's where such decisions and conclusions will be arrived at from a more familiar approach than as Mr. Weber, than than just in 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 silos. I think that's what we're going to, we will accomplish within the purpose to bring everyone to the table to have that.
Yeah, and and the other part about a working group, there's going to be pieces to it. I don't think everybody should have to sit at that table every single time. If we're talking about a whole work plan, only the board members and and the internal, like, people should really, to involve community members in some of it, maybe a lot because we're going to be asking them to to attend sometimes on a frequent basis, depending on what's going on. So that working group may be a little fluid, as they were in previous actions, where we would invite the community members during certain conversations, but maybe not all conversations. I would see it looking like that as well as we approach this.
Yeah, I was kind of looking at it, I'm just looking at the year one and year two, if we have a separate little working group. Of my thought process was, yeah, we then we can really sit down and, you know, just start throwing throwing out the ideas and sort of talking about the different categories, right? Because it really is, I think, to your point too, like, yeah, we have year one, but it's, I think it should be, okay, year one, but what do we have to do for baseball? Period. Like, that piece. And sort of just break it down in different sections a little bit, only because, A, we don't want to rework anything, right? So once you talk through, it's like, hey, we have to get this done for baseball, but will that affect something that we wanted to do in year two, like adding in softball? And so in my brain, that's just kind of how I was looking at it, like, we'll get to that, which isn't necessarily your thought process on it, but, you know, just being interested in baseball and having worked at McBride and just sort of understanding that facility and some of the history and what's been done and the nuances, you know. I think I might be a little calmer in what is to be expected, but that's just because of, you know, Deanna is here and she knows, you know, spending eighteen hours a day for days and days at that field is, you know, just is a slightly different perspective. But that's just kind of how I looked at it, because I do think when we have a year one, year two, that plan might eventually be extended out a little bit as we add on. But it's really like, what do we want, right? Like, here's baseball, here's softball. What does Seaton want? What do they have? What are the other, you know, travel tapes coming in? What is the community piece? And you don't want to work in silos, but they sort of all need to be thought out, kind of thrown out, which, to me, that's, if there's a smaller working group, then that can be brought to the bigger group to kind of hone in on some of those other questions.
Because as the board, I mean, our biggest question is tennis courts, which has been on the table for years. And if we, if I'm looking at priority capital investment, I think tennis is, I mean, it's been on the slate and something has to be done. Now, maybe we can squeeze another year out, but that's several hundred thousand dollar, half a million dollar project. And so you have these two facilities dovetailing together possibly, but also competing for those same limited resources and dollars. So I think it's just good problems to have, I guess.
As you see, in previous practice with our work sessions, with the intentionality centered around, in particular, tonight, I know that we do have a few this evening that are here to.
Yes, I wanted to, before inviting them, that's all right. Okay, first of all, I haven't heard much from Pete, so.
I have.
Scary.
Really great meeting, huh?
It's really. Way to go on the call.
No, I, and and I guess my question goes to where we're at on the contract, and I, you're, we're not comfortable with it at this point, and the city's not comfortable with it if we were to approve.
Well, it's not finished. I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't characterize the status of it as reflecting discomfort on either parties, by either party, but but it's not final.
Okay. And and my concern is in the in the scope of other things going on. We're looking at collective bargaining and making sure dollars are available there to satisfy those needs that are there, that that we have enough dollars to go around to purchase this, and not just purchase it, but to be able to maintain it and bring it, to rehab it and bring it to a level that it's usable, safe, and something that that is on the level of our other properties that are in our inventory already. So that that's my biggest concern with with McBride. I've talked to same folks Brad talked to, and they had a comfort level with McBride, which eases that up a little bit. I think there's going to be some community partners that will be able to work with us on this project so it's not taking out of the same pool of dollars that have come from. It obviously wouldn't come from the education fund, but not from our normal operations fund either.
I I'm gonna just, that has not been determined, so we have to understand that right now it would come from operations. So I just want to be very clear about that because we have no guarantees at this point in time. So we need to just all be very comfortable with this would have to come out of our operations fund. The one thing that changed in the legislation two years ago, in the operations fund, you now get growth quotient each year. So sometimes it's, you know, zero. It's only been one time negative in the last thirteen years here. But there is growth quotient that then provides you with a change in revenue year over year, generally in a positive way. And so that is something that we hadn't had before that we do have now. It does help us a little bit, especially with circuit breakers being what they are here. That is something that does assist us in in the the operational facilities and technology side of things here, so.
I think it's four percent for next year.
It's four percent this year. They haven't released it yet for sure. It's, but it was that this year, so it's possible that it'll stay that. It was three points something last year, so, yeah.
Wouldn't we talk about, you know, the work and the costs of like getting this up and running? When we purchase something like this or do the work, can we, I know we talked about just reaching out to the community, but is it really something, like, some things can be done, like pure sweat equity, like, you know, I think, call the arms of every person's ever played baseball, and like, they're going to be there because how many hours they spent? But I just didn't know, you know, what work can sort of be divvied up in that way? And can we actually?
So I've actually been looking at that. We have a fantastic, and when I say fantastic, I am underestimating the work that happens in our maintenance department. We have very skilled laborers, laborers, and we have concrete, we have HVAC, we have electrical. We, and they are, they are actual, like, certified in it. And so some of that work will happen internally. As I said during the presentation, those numbers are high based on the fact that if we have to go out and get it because we don't have time to do it internally or because it might be something that needs to be done and we can't, then I wanted to be sure you had, like, worst case, as much as possible. I mean, there can always be some unexpected thing, but but we have a really great crew of workers here that can do a ton of stuff. We have somebody on the crew that is actually on the field maintenance crew for Centerville Youth Leagues. And so, like, we have very skilled staff. I've been contacted by a couple of people in the community that are willing to come help us and put that sweat equity in because they they love Richmond schools and they love McBride Stadium. And I do think that that is one hundred percent possible.
Yep.
All right, any further discussion before we open up the dialogue to our public and continue the discussion?
I'm going forward to you a name of a Richmond graduate of the early nineteen eighties, if I recall, and I won't mention the name publicly right now, but had been a baseball player and football player and everything else. And if I recall, he had been the facilities director for the former Hoosier Dome for a number of years, but he played in that stadium. And I'll forward the name to you as a possible potential resource for contact.
Thanks. All right, so first person we have, Deanna. Are you wanting to join the conversation or?
No, I just wanted to be present to kind of get a feel for where the thing, where things were as a as a user in the past and just kind of kind of hit us from no, out of nowhere. So just trying to get a grasp on on what's happening.
Well, you've got insight, so please share anything we need to know.
Oh, I wish I did have insight.
Ms. Ms. Bingham, if you like, you can join us here at the at the days, if you like.
Well, I can. Thank you.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, no, I I literally just wanted to come and be present on behalf of our our foundation. We run a five oh one C three college sports team, and we obviously have utilized McBride in the past. So this all came very sudden to us last Monday morning, so that's why I'm here.
So any any pitfalls that we need to be aware of or any?
Yeah, but I'm probably not comfortable sharing those.
Okay, no, that's fair, that's fair, okay.
And there's positives and and negatives, so.
Any questions for Deanna? She's an unofficial public commentator at this point.
Well, I'd be very interested, you know, in the future with hearing what she has to say, considering her connection to the stadium over the last twenty years. And and I think that her input would be rather valuable for us in the future.
Would say is that, is the team can planning to continue next summer? Well, I I will say that we we play in what's called the Great Lakes Summer Collegiate League. It's a twelve member league from around the Indian, Ohio, Kentucky area, Michigan markets as well. And we run into some heavy deadlines coming September, October, November. And so when we learned about this, we were just unsure how this might affect us and if we can, you know, be able to use the facility and and what that all looks like. So just some uncertainty on our end, just not really knowing. So at this time, we have kind of put a put a hold on what our plans are at this point. So but we're also under some time constraints. So it's a very strategic position that we that we're sitting in at this point.
Yeah, a switch of landlords, so to speak.
Yeah, switch of landlords, yes.
Potentially, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
And to to kind of circle back to where we are as far as are are we as a board open to the use of the property being used by non-RCS entities? It seems like the consensus is that we are as a board. So if there are members that are feeling otherwise, please, because it does seem like that's some direction we need to be getting.
I like they're they're part of the community as well, and so I think it would be a mistake to not allow them to play there. So they've invested a lot of time and effort there and do something to upkeep as well. And there's a, there's a lot of people look forward to their games.
Yeah. It does bring a fun component to Richmond. I mean, the games are, yeah, the fireworks and all the.
All the fun pieces, yes.
The best fireworks.
Yeah, it's all the showy stuff.
Yes, all that fun stuff, so. All right, well, again, we don't have any definite.
I appreciate the opportunity to to be here and listen. Is there, are are we able to obtain whatever the presentation was? Okay.
So it's Tom Ward, it's Tom Ward, not us.
Okay, perfect.
So we'll probably.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. All right, next we've got Nancy.
I believe that Mr. Joe and Nancy are you both together? Yes, if you'd like to join us and and contribute, or if you're just here to listen, that's fine as well.
I'm just, I'm just here to listen. I'm going to keep discussing.
Yeah, please join us.
I I would, if you don't mind.
Oh, please do, absolutely.
I would say to start with, our our collective family has in excess of, I would say, a hundred years' experience around McBride. We live within a few blocks, so I know what happens there on a daily basis, basically. My my step grandfather played there in the forties, so, and I have pictures to prove. I was really interested, and I thought it might come out, how this opportunity came up. And but I, if, maybe I missed it, or were you just lucky or?
And could you please state your, your name for the board?
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe Laerson.
Laerson, okay, thank you.
Before you enter, I I've sat in the park office some years ago and numerous times and repeatedly asked to buy McBride, and I was met with with blank stares and and no statements. And now, all of a sudden, here here this is. So surprise, surprise. Anyway, lucky you, if you can get it done. I say lucky, but knowing knowing what it costs to run a place like that, luck may not be the word. Exactly.
And is that something, can we address some of those questions? I don't know if we can do that from a legal perspective, Ron.
We mean address questions?
The questions are, how how is it that we, as a public entity, are afforded this opportunity? Is that something we can?
If you know, I don't know the answer to that question. I know it's been something that's been discussed between the city and 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 the school corporation for at least at various levels, at least five, six years.
I think your question is, why now?
Not not necessarily now. I guess now is part of the how how that it came about when, I guess, basically when I was shut out. Because I I can, I'll sit here and tell you, I know, I can call about five people right now, and they they would buy that property in a minute, you know, and.
All private individuals.
Yes. And and again, some some reference, I was even an optimist member, so I know across the road is Flood Plane. We we built the majority of that stuff. Your your JV diamond that you're talking about, we.
This floodplain, we, we built the majority of that stuff, your, your JB Diamond that you're talking about, we. Me and three other guys did that entire field when we tore the other one down, so I know, I know every aspect of, of that field.
You sound like a community engagement burger.
And then we did the, some of the history, and I'm not from Richmond, so McBride isn't, I don't have the stories Aaron and Kim have, but uh. But I know there was, I think back in the day, there was a partnership with the schools and the city. I believe I read it in some of the material we've been provided for the facility, and I think that. When you say how, I mean, I think looking historically back to those, that partnership. I think that's where I would assume that that came from, uh, rightly or wrongly, and then I think it's, I think when Seton built their field. I think McBride kind of lost that, that bigger uh, uh, client or, or. Earlham, I'm sorry, Earlham, and uh, and it seemed like that kind of started paving the path for where we're at today. I could be wrong, but.
Just to piggyback on that, as, as a school superintendent of the information that was presented to me by my administrative team and those uh, in the field, if you will. Um, of the challenges that have been for some time, and I think it was referenced even earlier this evening. Um, the fact that we were challenged with other school corporations being going to uh, commit to home and home or, or. Scheduling uh, complex, not, not only that, but also the, the safety and security.
That was certainly part, you know, it's the old adage, necessity breeds innovation and, and. We were looking at facilities. Possible alternative facilities to McBride for the, for programming for Richmond, for Richmond High School. And that was four, four or five years ago, you know. And so. I, I'm not saying we initiated this last round, but I think there, I think there's been discussions going and there's, and I think the city administration. Uh, through this one at least, it's known there's at least a, an ear here that will listen to possibilities, not. Karen may know, I don't, I don't know if there's anything just happened that suddenly now it has to happen.
No, I, I know what you know, um, I, we can't answer that because it's not ours to answer. We don't know, um, the one thing that, that I can say is that it is important to everybody that it remain a community based. Area, and that's probably just lent itself to continue with the relationship that we've had for a while. In knowing that that will be important to us as well, but I can't speak to that. So I'm just making an assumption based on the fact that a school um, has a lot of the similar. Um, interests and um, and thoughts when it comes to community as the city would, and so. Um, but yeah, we, we have had to have conversations on our end about facilities um. For quite a while now.
But I think also what Mr. Weber alluded to, and as far as the historical partnership and the intentionality uh, initially. Of, of such partnership, we also.
Well, I, I, I do believe the school should have its own field, I, I do feel like that is uh. Everywhere you go, and we, we, we've traveled all for many years, uh, people have nice facilities and they usually have big. Money backers, and, and the better your money backer, the better your field you play, hence Earlham, you know. Uh, and we, we played on many fields that are, are exceptionally nicer than Earlham. Few and far in between, and, and again, they're gonna be in excess of a million dollars, that's what they're gonna be, so I'm not, I'm not sure if you're. Prepared to put that kind of money into the McBride, I, I don't know, that's uh, that would be your decision at that point. But, but in any event, uh, the original question was, you know, I, I offered and was met with uh. And that, and that's how I, I wish you good luck on being able to buy it, that's what I do. And as far as your, I would have something to say on your, your statement about having a working group. To maybe throw in ideas on the field, there's more than just one person. This city seems to think one guy knows something about everything on the field, and that's not necessarily true, I'm here to tell you. As we, we've been around.
Okay, I, I thank you for your time.
No, thank you.
For what, it's where since the new flood maps have been drawn, Wright Field is entirely in a floodplain now.
I would guess the majority of that area down there is a floodplain.
Entire eastern.
I, I know for a fact because we, we built the volleyball shelter in between the volleyball courts and, and immediately got red flags. Shut off, so, um, I, I did my due diligence with the city before us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, further thoughts and comments? It look, at, just at this point, it looks like uh, we are interested in um, possibly uh, going for. It sounds like there's strong interest in pursuing this purchase, um, that's what I'm hearing, um, and um. So much so that we would want to give kind of a preliminary approval at this point, are we thinking that that would be?
I mean, I, I think I would become from making a motion that we, based on the rough draft. Of the purchase agreement, which I don't think is going to change substantially, or at least the, the board. Be particularly interested in, I could be wrong, but, but uh, but based on what we've seen so far, and I don't know how to articulate that, but I would move that we. Proceed with the purchase agreement.
Recognizing the time factor, after we sign the purchase agreement, we can get to closing, but there's a ninety day due diligence period, uh, we certainly want to survey. I mentioned the floodplain issue that the gentleman brought up, that is more pronounced now since FEMA's done its new maps. Want to talk to Greg Steens, this is in the city's jurisdiction, not the county's, to see, make sure we know what. He's comfortable with our doing the way of facility improvements in a floodplain, and he may have some restrictions. There are a lot of things between signing the purchase agreement and getting to the closing table that are gonna have to pay, have to survey. I'm at least a phase one environmental, I, I just had my eyebrows tweaked when I read a provision that said that they. Think there may have been trash or dumped uh, areas in the field to the east across the. And I had no idea behind the armory, so I don't know what that means. So there's, I mean, there's just, you know, Kristen can relate, to do a, to do a purchase like this, there's just a lot of balloons that are in the air that have to come down sequentially or. Together, but they, they have to come down.
So Ron, just so we're hearing you, um, is, is that a caution or a commendation? Are you com, are you commending this um, preliminary approval because you're like, there's a lot of work to do between now and then, let's get, keep it all rolling?
The next step is to get the purchase agreement put, eh, put in place, which means you're gonna, at that point, you're committed. Uh, I think Karen has done as good a job as she can do of trying to identify the variables that are there. Uh, and the city's been very gracious, they've given you, Karen's now one of their key holders. It's not an exclusive club, I don't think, but that's. But uh, I mean, and we, they, they've given us access, we've been there, I, you know, and it's.
So you're feeling like maybe just us verbally saying, we're, we're interested, let's keep this ball moving.
I, I would hope that we could really do something by the, at the meeting on the eighteenth, I mean, I, I can't say that's. That's not totally within our control, but uh, uh, again. Issues come up as we dig, as we peel the onion, so to speak.
Okay, so you're, you're thinking that maybe that motion would be better served withdrawn, is that kind of?
There's just a lot of variables in play that aren't in our control. I think if we can get an agreement in place by the end of October, I think that would be conducive to our best interest.
Okay, but it does sound like we're definitely um, interested, is what we're hearing, it sounds like we're definitely um, interested in also having a working group. And we hear you loud and clear, Karen, as far as there are some um, mandatory structural changes that we would need to just kind of be moving forward with. And then I, I personally also like the idea of having some key players outside of the board that are invited to the table. When uh, when appropriate, so um, it sounds like people are good with that, um, alright, what else? What else do we need to discuss in regards to that? Okay, Karen's got the thumbs up. Alright, well then, uh, moving away from the McBride uh, conversation onto four point oh one, we have other discussion. Um, anything else that you need to be considering for the good of the board?
I'm gonna have to leave in a few minutes, I've got to speak tonight, uh, but keep going.
Um, one thing I wanted to bring up was, uh, Dr. Right, Dr. Right and I went to the. Uh, state school board conference, um, two weeks ago, one thing that was real interesting to talk about. They had a whole. Breakout session basically on public commentary and things of that nature. Uh, finding out on the state is, I didn't see anyone else in the state that had a five minute public commentary. Everybody's three, and there were a bunch of them that only have one. So, um, maybe we want to look at in the future or start talking about it. To help streamline the meetings, to go to a three minute public commentary. And all the, we need to put that policy or if you have it as a guideline, or if that's something we want to talk about even, but.
That's interesting, Brad, because I've, I've said that to people, not necessarily. In this venue, sitting at this table, uh, for several years, you know, our five minute. Uh, time period that we grant, uh, far exceeds that which normally, and I mean. You said, you know, I pointed three fingers to you, normally that is, you know, sixty plus seventy percent. A school corporations around the country that have public commentary, limited to three minutes.
I couldn't believe how many of them only have one. And uh, they have like a. Where you can't defer time to someone, it's, it's your time or no, it's, there's no deferment. It was just really interesting to see all that, see how. I mean, just how different we are, I mean, accommodating, I guess, but.
I can't think of the last time that we stopped something, so I mean, no one's.
We stopped people before.
I, yeah, I remember, but it's been a while, I'm just saying that maybe five minutes is too much time.
Right, yeah, I think it is too, but.
Was it policy or prac, practice?
Our policy says up to five minutes.
But it didn't limit, it didn't limit to thirty minutes, and that was our.
So if, yeah, I think if we have over, in the past, if we've had over ten people, we've always knocked it down to three minutes. But uh, that's just kind of the past practice, but, you know, with uh, us going to Neola and everything else and getting our policies up to date. Maybe we want to look at, eh, actually putting that in there in verbiage, that, so that we have stuff to stand on, so. No one can say favoritism or anything like that.
And Brad, if I, I'm glad you said favoritism, because if I, if I were to throw a, a chink in that, the reality of it is. Uh, we have, you know, with somebody sitting here at the timer on, you know, critical faults that have come forth. We have, to an extent, uh, we have shut some down, I'm, I'm sorry, your time is up. And then at other times, there have been members from this table who have said, go ahead, let them speak, let them continue. And I have always had the concern of the consistency or the inconsistency of that, depending upon what he or she is saying from that podium. You know, five minutes or that timeframe should, should be consistent with the next person who has to speak. Whether we like the message or disagree with the message, and so. So it is, and regardless of who the person is, you know, regard, whether it's gonna be five minutes or three minutes. We should be consistent and say, you have thirty seconds left.
What's the county?
Not aware of a. Yeah.
You don't, uh, you mean the, oh, oh, you mean the county, not the uh, yeah.
I'm not aware of a strict policy, we, we never, council side never had anything that was. Strict policy that I'm aware of.
And county council you talking about?
Yeah.
You rarely have public comment, I mean, or public attendance, alone public comment. No, I, I've got two public hearings tomorrow night at the school corporation in One Elk Creek, and. Very first thing in, in, in the president's spiel is, please limit your comments to three minutes or less.
That was my next question to you, this, I know you represent other school corporations, what are their times?
I just saw that one today, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I look at the policies and see, I can't. I, I can't speak with more authority than that, I just, that's coincidence that I happened to be looking at that today.
Is it normal practice to be able to cap total public comment at thirty minutes or whatever that number is, and if you have?
Well, I think it ought to be a policy, I, I, I think it ought to be in the policy that.
Okay.
Then how you implement that policy is always gonna be a somewhat discretion of the chair and the collective consensus of the board assembled, but uh. I mean, you gotta go back to, you know, educate the public. Fundamentally, unless it is a public hearing, in which tomorrow night we're dealing with bonds and there are two public hearings, but unless the matter requires a public hearing. The general rule is, there is no right for any member of the public to speak at a public meeting of this board, right? Emphasize, in air quotes, the word right, there is the right to be present, to record, and that means. Take notes, means if you're not really creating a disturbance, you can video cam it now with your, you know, whatever. But you don't have the right to address the board, that being said, I think it's the, by far the more frequent. Practice that most governing bodies, particularly school boards, that are so vested with the community, the interest of. Their patrons and their patrons' kids, those are pretty, pretty significant interest, I, I, I. I'm not saying there aren't any school boards in Indiana that don't allow public comment, but I can't, I, I've never heard of one that doesn't. Uh, but again, it's not a legal requirement, it's a policy, and I think that your policy needs to reflect. The practice that you wish to have, and there'd be times when, if you have a push button issue, that three minutes is gonna seem like. Not nearly, you know, a long time, but. You just have to deal with it.
And I do think probably as a board, even though there isn't a right, we do want to continue to extend that.
I'm not, I'm not saying take it away at all. I'm just letting you know, when we found out, I was kind of, you know, you, you're in this role for however many years, and you just kind of become accustomed to it. Then you start hearing, and, and people are looking at you like, are you crazy?
It wasn't that long ago that we had two, two periods of public comment.
Right.
One half hour at the beginning, half hour.
We were, we were talking and in the breakout session, I, I can't remember exactly what it was I still talked about, but. When I told them that, you know, we get five minutes, I mean, I, every head in the place turned and like, are you serious? And just, it was, it was pretty like, I was like, whoa, I was not expecting that, so. I was like, that, that tells me everything I need to know right there, was when they, when they did that head turn and the whole audience was like. I want to see this crazy.
I mean, I don't know that we've had a problem, I think, uh, I mean, I think when I was president, I was more apt to cut the, the time short than Mrs. Stoltz. But, I mean, we tend to just let people speak and. You know, I think in my time on the board, you know, I don't know that we have to reinvent our policy or do a whole lot different than what we've been doing.
To me, though, if we address it now when it's not a problem, and when it does become a problem, then it doesn't seem like we're, you know.
When was it, when has it been a problem?
If I haven't known it to be, but I'm saying if it does.
I think we're solving a problem we don't have.
Maybe it's just kind of like getting in line with where we should be, I don't know.
What the current norms are.
If it were, I mean, if it were three minutes and a max of thirty minutes, then we would allow ten people, which I can't remember when we've had over ten, but. I'm just thinking if we address it now before it ever could become a problem, then.
Why don't the exec board bring something to the board?
Would it be different for, like a work session, you know, we touched on them, obviously it's more of a dialogue, does that? Would that stay true to a work session, or can it be more?
Yeah, you can do it either way, your practice has been, which I think makes sense. A, it makes people that attend the work session do their homework, but you typically have limited your public comment. At your work session to the topics that were the subject of the work session.
Right.
And not, not opening it up for what happened last week in Johnny at school.
But you have to run the meeting efficiently, and I mean, I think our past practice has been like, probably because it's a good and ample opportunity to. Voice their concerns. They may disagree, but.
So, or, well, Erin, did you? So, or, well, Aaron, did you have a question?
Yeah. Ten for three minutes as opposed to six for five, and I mean, you know, maybe tit for tat, but I the thought is three minutes, I'm okay with it, and if if we were going to make that move or or do something, or or just really consider doing that and create a policy for it, the sooner the better, so that it's not in the midst of something, and it would come across to the public that we're shutting down voices. And we would emphasize that with any communication, or we go that route to say, this is why we're doing this, fall in line with the practices of seventy percent of the other school boards around the country, and and do that as opposed to waiting when Rome is burning and saying, we're shutting this down because we don't want the citizens to talk about Rome is burning.
I mean, having reduced from three to five, or from five to three many times, there are a few people that are taken back because they have prepared for their full five minutes. And but also considering all the comments we've received, I don't think anyone's not been able to relay their point in a well-thought-of, even slightly more concise manner, and so uh, I mean, whatever you guys want to do, I don't think, I think we're fixing the problem we don't have.
And that's my clarifying question to Tony Cross, given the fact that right now, within bylaw zero one sixty, regarding this particular topic, if the board had an appetite, as as discussed, to revise from five to three, what would be the steps that they'd have to take outside of a motion in the board?
Someone's going to have to take the initiative to draft the revision based upon what that person, member, administrator feels is the consensus of the board, and then it would have to be introduced at one meeting and voted on on the first meeting, and then a second meeting, they don't have to be consecutive if there's issues that come up between after the first and before the final.
And I'm hearing maybe we want to adjust the time and put a cap, because we don't in our policy have a cap.
Right.
Do that work, and then maybe, I know Brad mentioned deferring time, is that addressed? In our policy currently, so maybe that would also.
We've never allowed it, but I've been on the board.
I've seen that happen.
Yeah, I'll say.
I've been present for a while, so I wonder for
Yeah.
For minutes.
I don't think, but I I would not, I don't recall her allowing it, it's been asked.
It's been asked, it wasn't allowed, from what I remember, it was in the fall of last year, it was asked and not allowed.
Yeah, and that's where we'd like to have it, I think I would like to have that in policy, before we leave on that.
It was too bad, but I would never allow it.
Okay, so just based on conversation, it sounds like it would be the role of the board for um for the exec committee along with Dr. Stoltz to kind of reform that.
Dr. Stoltz?
Dr. Sorry. Okay, you, yeah, you you started this. Dr. Wright, to figure out just kind of a where we want to go with this as far as moving from up to five minutes to the current norm of three minutes, also the deferment, and then the caps.
And working session being different to working session being limited to what the topic at.
Okay, okay, is that what I'm hearing?
Probably limiting it to ten, and then in just whoever signs up the first ten, that way there's no pick and choose of those, because the last thing I.
Yeah, I would I would say.
I would put ten.
I would say thirty.
Because if someone just speaks for a minute.
I'd say thirty minute cap, and then that way if, you might be able to fit fifteen people in.
That's fine, I I just, and it's based on order, we're not going to pick who goes, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Are you going to allow a person who signed up to yield their time to a prior or subsequent speaker?
That's what we're talking about, is, you know, put in there a deferment of time to in the past, to people, I don't think we've allowed it, it's been asked.
It, that just creates problems. Because you could ever defer their time to one grandstand, or you could go on for half an hour, hope it, and I don't think that's what the goal is, of public commentary.
Alright, I think we've got a general idea of what we're wanting. Pete, you look like you're still thinking over there, okay. Okay, any other discussion? No, okay. Alright, well, without further ado, um we will adjourn, thank you. Alright.